Have a nice day, Maroni family.
We were wondering why all the people were here. Who are all those people?
I think your family is smart to leave. At this time, I would like to take a moment of silence. We had an officer who lost a child. Let's please just take a moment for Officer Germanus and his entire family. Thank you. Onto our next item is our public hearing, the Laduka duplex at 213 South Cross Street. The purpose is to hear public comment regarding the conditional use permit, CUP, to convert an existing single-family dwelling into a two-family duplex dwelling at 213 South Cross Street per the table of allowable uses listed in Section 17-106 of the City of Oconomak zoning code. A duplex use requires a CUP in the traditional residential zoning district. If approved, the applicant will be allowed to use the existing structure as a two-family, which is classified as a duplex within our zoning ordinance. Mr. Gallo.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll give a brief overview of this public hearing, and then it'll be opened up for the public to comment. A conditional use is being requested at 213 South Cross Street. We put a sign out there. A lot of people have called my office, and I explained that it's for a conversion of that single-family home into a duplex. This house was used as a duplex years ago. Back in the 1980s, it was stopped. The owner at that time did not want to pay to garbage collections. They were not using it as a duplex. It lost their right to use it as a duplex. Today, in the zoning ordinance, in the TR zoning, the traditional residential, we allow duplexes, but as a conditional use. It was determined by the council that a duplex is a bit more intensive use, and it requires a bit more thorough review by both the Plan Commission, the Common Council, with a public hearing. You created standards several years ago and said these are the standards that we feel that each conditional use should meet, including duplexes. So I'll go through those real quick. The duplex is located again at 213 Cross Street. It's highlighted in the yellow on your screen. Directly across the street is the former St. Jerome's Church. Now it's Jim Lingo. There's also some railroad tracks to the north, and you'll see later in a slide that's where Maxim's Restaurant is. So it fronts Cross Street. The backyard is actually a parking lot for a church down here as well. So we have standards, and I want to just go through those quickly with you. And then, as I show you some photos, you'll have to determine if these are being met. Plus, the applicant will be explaining this a bit, too. So the first one shall have two addresses, and the police will assign a new address. It'll be 213 and probably, oops, that's a mistake, 213A South Cross Street. We'll be updating the dispatch system to reflect the new address. Provide a minimum of two onsite parking stalls per unit, so they need four parking stalls. I'll show you photos of that. Shall have separate access from the exterior for each unit. I'll show you that. They must pay two garbage collection fees, and they haven't done that yet, but they intend on paying that. They shall install two utility connection meters. Currently, there's one meter. They said they'll make any changes required by the city. They shall pay two applicable impact fees, "applicable" being the key word there. In this case, I feel the "applicable," it would be highway, police, and parks would be impacted. There's no increase in the water and sewer meter size, so for this, it's recommended that the utility impact fees are not applicable. And I'll go through that a little bit with you. Two separate kitchens. I have a graphic that shows that. Minimum of four egress means of exiting from the structure. It's a safety issue. Two separate garages, and then comply with all other city regulations. So getting right into that, I'm just going to take you on a tour of the property. This is the driveway. It's a shared driveway with the property to the north. This is looking out towards Cross Street. You can see the former church here, and then the Maxim's Restaurant there. It's a shared driveway. They did have two electric meters at one time, but it looks like this one has been taken out. The garage, there's two garage doors. It's a very deep garage. It could actually probably park tandem at least in one side if they needed to, two cars in there. But they got two separate garages. They have the structure on the backside. They have plenty of access points. They have three. Then they have one on the front, so they do meet that minimum of four access points. As far as the backyard, I said it meets up with a church parking lot, so it's really not impacting people in the rear there. As far as onsite parking, this is in front of the garage, so you can see they have additional parking. They could put a car or two over in that area as well. The requirement that they have two kitchens, I highlighted the two areas. This one here says first-level floor plan, and then this is the second-level floor plan, with I specifically highlighted the areas that were designated for a kitchen. This is photos submitted by the applicant. I did not go inside the structure, but I thought this was important for you to see. The first-floor kitchen was highlighted. The second-floor kitchen was shown. So I included those photos for you. I did draft a conditional use permit. There's 22 conditions that the owner must adhere to. It allows primarily this to be a duplex. There's no sewer and water impact fees recommended because, again, there's no increase to the meter size. I am recommending impact fees be paid for the highway, which is $445, parks $32.98, and law enforcement. There is going to be an impact on the community with a second family. So their total impact fee would be $42.50 payable to the city. And then they must provide a minimum of four onsite parking stalls. You saw that they have garage and onsite areas. They must pay the two garbage pickup costs per the CUP. And it also is important to note that this permit would be transferable. Conditional uses run with the land, so if they do sell this in the future, the ownership change does not require any new approvals. Plan Commission did recommend approval of the conditional use permit as drafted in your packet of information with the conditions as listed. At this point, I think the applicant really, I put a slide up. They have to provide evidence to you, and then, as you recall, with a conditional use, the motion should really mean something to the effect that you felt that the evidence was presented, that they've met the standards. Thank you.
Thank you. And if anybody wants to make a public comment, there are blue cards. You can fill those out, but we'll start here with Mr. Laduka. If you would like to make your statements, that would be good. And then, if anyone would like to talk either for or against this at the public hearing, we'll do that right after Mr. Laduka presents his position.
Yeah, thank you for your time today, and just like to, my request is to obviously grant 213 Cross Street back to a duplex from a single-family that it previously was. And I'm providing all the specifications for conditional use under Section 17108. She'll have two addresses. I will address the front of the house as 213 and 213A Cross Street. I will provide minimum of two onsite parking stalls, as well as a garage. Like Jason Gallo said, the garage is pretty large. One of the sides, it does go deep, so you could potentially put two cars or a car and a motorcycle in one. Also, it is a second floor, so on the second floor, there's steps that go up, and there's a nice loft up top for storage as well, so that is a nice asset to the property. I plan on keeping the property updated. I plan on putting money back into the property. I plan on renting to good tenants. It would be a two-bedroom down and a two-bedroom up. Tenants that are working, tenants that are providing money for the City of Oconomak, either by shopping in downtown, dining at local restaurants, enjoying baseball games at the Doc Hound Stadium, and just giving back to the community. You know, I also feel that my selection of tenants is A-plus. I'm not just looking for any tenant. I'm looking for tenants that are going to give back to the community, help me keep the property up, and also look at reinvesting in the City of Oconomak for themselves, two, three, four years down the road, buying their own homes in Oconomak, and keeping that energy alive in the city. I will pay two recycling collection fees. I do offer separate exterior access points, four to be certain. I will pay the applicable fees. There are two kitchens in the property, two bathrooms. My properties will include utilities, heat and electric, for my tenants, and I will comply with all the city regulations that need to be. So I urge you, I hope that I can get this approved today with my neighbors. I hope that I can give back to the Cross Street and enhance Cross Street, enhance the curb appeal of your neighborhood, and overall help bring up the property values of yours as well for someday when you choose to sell your property. So I'm here for the long run. Again, I live in, born and raised in Oconomak, three children, beautiful wife. I love Oconomak, and I'm here to stay. So thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Do I have any comments from the public? Are there any blue cards where anybody would like to, if you'd come up, please? Jason, behind you. Great. When you come up, if you could please state your name and your address, and you have approximately three minutes, and as you discuss your opinion. Yeah, this is a one-way discussion, so it's really you sharing your thought for the council members here to listen.
This is a public hearing, and we can have give and take.
Public hearing.
You're ready? Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Deborah Soens. I live at 203 Summit with my husband, Michael. And we just wanted to offer our support to Mr. Laduka. We share the driveway with 213 South Cross Street, and we have been acquainted with Mr. Laduka since he took ownership of the property. We found him to be very accommodating, very interested in making sure that the neighborhood sees some improvement, and we're really excited to see this turn into a duplex. Less than three minutes.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else have a public comment? Without any further comments, we're going to close the public hearing for this item for the Laduka duplex. Thank you, Mr. Gallo. I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of minutes for April 4th, 2023.
So moved.
Second, Altman, cloth.
All in favor?
Aye.
Without objection, I'd like to move forth Item 12A, which are the mayoral citizen appointments. You have a large group of appointments and changeover at this point in time. Many of those applicants are here in the audience. Some were not able to attend. But what I'd like to do is leave it open for any council member to call anyone up and ask any questions you'd like at this point. Of you, there are applicants in there. You may be called up. If you could come up to the podium, and you may have council members ask you questions about your thoughts with regard to the area that you're interested in. So we have quite a few, and while they're getting their papers together, because we moved this forward so you wouldn't have to stay for the whole meeting, what we want to make sure is that you have an opportunity, they have an opportunity to talk with you. If they approve the appointment, then your appointment starts as of today. And thank you very much for your willingness to serve the community as a volunteer in all of these different areas within the city. So I'd like to entertain, anybody would like to bring anyone up or have any questions for anybody?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to bring up Kate Kennedy, Library Board, if she's here. Oh, hi, Kate.
Hi.
So just briefly, I gave you a call last week to just try to chat before the meeting. Never got a call back. Yeah, that's okay.
Kate, if you can talk into the microphone, sorry. You can pull it up if you want.
Sure, thank you.
Yeah, I do that sometimes, too.
Okay.
So I just wanted to ask you a couple of questions offline, but we didn't get a chance to do that. I tried to talk to some of the new appointees that the mayor puts forward just to give a chance to kind of have that dialogue, not in the public sphere, because it, you know, takes longer. But one of the things Betsy, on the way out, said that each library tailors its programs and services for its specific community and context. Do you believe that that's true?
Absolutely, I do.
And currently, you're a librarian in New Berlin. Is that correct?
It is, yes.
How long have you been in the city?
The City of Oconomak?
Correct.
I've been living here for about a year now.
Okay. Where did you come from before that?
Before this, I was living in Shorewood, outside of Milwaukee.
Okay. What brought you to apply? Now, again, I've asked the other applicants these questions, so I didn't get a chance to ask you that beforehand.
Absolutely.
What brought you to apply to the Library Board for this appointment?
Sure, thank you for asking. So I, like I said, have been living in Oconomak for about a year now, and so far, we've really loved our time here. We are really interested in kind of getting our roots into this community and staying longer term. So I would like to get more involved in one of the areas that, obviously, I'm passionate about is the library as a librarian. I think that I am a good candidate because I have experience in the library field, and I'm hoping that I can use that as a community member to try to help make our library as good as it can be.
Do you think your lack of time in the community is a detriment to your application?
I don't believe so, no. I think that if I tried to apply everything that I've learned from working in New Berlin or my previous time in Shorewood, I think it might be. But I think that we've been trying to be as open-minded as possible and try to, like I said, get to know this community as much as we can. And again, I think a lot of that comes from listening to the people who have been here longer and trying to, like I said, just kind of tailor the library to the community.
Do you have your library card here in Oconomak?
Well, so I have the library card in the Bridges Library System, so I guess, kind of, yes. It works in all Waukesha and Jefferson County libraries.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
While we have the applicant up, does anybody else have any questions? Jennifer.
Trying to think of how to ask this. So I'm on the Library Board. Oh, great. I'm the alderman appointed, and I'll be on for the next term as well. My concern, just kind of knowing how the Library Board functions, that when I saw your application, the first thing that kind of came to my mind was too many cooks in the kitchen, that... Trying to think of how to ask this, that my concern with you would be because of your background, that you might kind of squash some of the voices, the other voices, on the Library Board. You know, people that have lived in the community for a very long time, have served in our community for a very long time, that they'll just kind of take your word as gospel because you work in a library. You know, and then also the potential to kind of maybe butt heads with whoever our new library director would be. Do you see that that could be a concern?
I hear what you're saying, absolutely. I think that, knowing myself and the way that I operate professionally, I can't imagine that being an issue. Honestly, I can't recall a time when I've butted heads with anybody. So I certainly don't imagine butting heads with the director. And as far as squashing voices, again, I think that if you ask anyone who knows me, either personally or professionally, I try to encourage everybody to feel seen and heard, and I'm hoping that I can use my experience to kind of help in any ways that people might, I don't need help, but I have no intention of asserting myself as an authority.
And then just my last thing, and I think that your background could add value. I mean, don't take me wrong. My other concern is that, you know, just kind of looking at, you know, the information on two other candidates that were brought for, or, you know, that had applied for the library.
Sure.
You know, there are people that have lived in the community for 10, 15. I think one was 18 years. And I looked up, I believe you've been here since May of last year, so you're actually just, you're just under a year.
Yes.
And did you purchase a house? Are you renting an apartment? I mean, what's your...
Sure, yeah. So actually, we are, my fiance and I are living at the Hackney Houses right now. And actually, funnily enough, we're hoping to move into the duplex that we just looked at. So that is coming up soon.
Is it Mr. Laduka?
So A-plus tenants. But anyway, like I said, we are new to the community, and I definitely want to say that I do value the people who, like you said, have been living here for 10, 15 years. I think that there is absolutely tremendous value in that. But I do think that I am still a quality candidate to be considered, even though I'm just starting out here. We do intend to be here for a long period of time.
My last question is, how did you know about this opening?
Sure. I actually didn't know that there was going to be an opening. I just wanted to be on a Library Board, so I just sent in an application, and then, I don't know how much longer it was.
You weren't approached by anybody?
No, no, I was not. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Mulder, did you want to?
No, I'm good.
No, you're good. Any other comments? Alderman Rozak?
Yeah, I do have one last question. Thanks, Katie. Most of the other people that were on the list, I've had a chance to talk to, so I just have one other question. Do you have any dealings with the Board in New Berlin Library?
Not personally, no. I mean, there is the Library Board in New Berlin, of course. That is in charge of my director.
Yeah, John Merrick is the board president.
Yes, John Merrick. So I have attended, I believe, two meetings just to present. I'm the lead Adult Services Librarian in New Berlin, so I have attended to update the board on what's going on in the Adult Services Department, but that is the extent of it.
Do you know if that board has any other librarians from other libraries on their board?
Not to my knowledge, no.
That's all I have. Thanks for coming out. Appreciate your application.
Anyone else? Okay. Are there any other applicants? Thank you very much. Any other applicants in any of the areas that anyone would like to ask questions? Really?
Everyone else I either know I've talked to already, so I'm good.
Okay. We have a couple of different ways we can proceed. We can proceed with making a motion to approve all the mayoral appointments at one time, or if someone would like to pull someone out to have a separate vote, we can do that as well. So I'd like to have some, I'd like to entertain a motion at some level from someone.
I'd like to make a motion to approve all the appointments. I would like to pull Katie out, though, and vote on her separately based on the discussion.
I second that.
Any other comments or questions? We have a motion in a second. Call roll, please.
Alderman Rozak?
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth?
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Aye.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Schellpepper?
Clarifying the question, it's we're voting on everybody right now except the one.
Yes.
Okay.
Aye.
Alderman Maroni?
Aye.
Alderman Douglas?
Aye.
Okay. So for all of you that came, thank you very, very much. And now we'd like to entertain a motion for Kate Kennedy.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussions or comments or questions for the applicant? Alderman Rozak?
Yeah, I have no other discussion or questions for her. I guess mostly just the reasons I'm pulling her out and why I will vote against her. One, we had several other applicants for this position. In fact, I think it's the first time in nine years on council we've had five people put in applications for the Library Board. I think there's no question it's a unique time with us exploring a new library director, and I think that's probably part of the interest. And I will give props to Mayor Magnus for, you know, kind of taking some of the members that have been there for a while and try to get some new blood on there. I know he's done a good thorough process. My issues with Katie are not her personally. I think she seems like a really nice gal. My concerns are that we have a library in Oconomak, not a New Berlin library. And I think one of her responses at the end was interesting, that she's not aware of anybody on their board that's a librarian in another community. So what I would like to see in a board like this, and most of the citizens' board, especially Library and Police Commission, where those citizen members have so much different power than our other boards. This isn't like Park and Rack, right? These folks actually will vote for the new library director on Police Commission, which, again, the mayor's done a good job of putting a lot of new members on. The Police Commission's the same thing. We don't control the chief and the police department directly. Those citizens control. And we've done a really good job of putting people on that have had a long time in the community, know the community, but aren't necessarily just cops, right? Aren't necessarily just law enforcement. So I don't, I don't think we should be appointing people to boards like this that have control of budgets and control of hiring and firing without significant time in the community. And I don't think that means we need a litmus test, you know, like you have to be here for two years, or you have to be here for five years. But those are my principal concerns. We had other folks that applied, including Lou Kavieski. Lou's working on significant fundraising efforts now for the library. A problem I've discussed with both the mayor and with Matt Mulder is the monolithic nature of our Library Board in general. And I think we should do what we can to try to break that mold and bring in new voices. And I don't know that Katie's the right fit right now. Maybe two years from now, she is. Maybe three years from now, she is. But someone that's just moved to the community and that experienced another library, I don't think is conducive to what we need right now in the community.
We have a motion in a second. Any further comments, Mayor, or Alderman Mulder?
Sure, I'll provide a different perspective on that. And I do appreciate that. I think those are some excellent points. I think we're at a unique time where we don't have a director, or soon won't have a director. And so I think this is a time where that guidance, while Kate doesn't have decades of experience, you know, she does have recent experience in public libraries, which are, you know, an ever-changing environment. Many of the members that are, were, that have been on the Library Board have been on the Library Board a very long time. So I feel like a fresh, new voice that has library experience that can help guide that selection committee, because they will ultimately be making the decision. So to have someone with experience, I think at this moment makes a lot of sense, because it is a task that, you know, we won't have oversight or insight into, besides you, Jennifer. So, you know, it kind of gives me confidence that we will have somebody that has a little bit inside knowledge of what might be, we should be looking for as we continue to, you know, progress and evolve our library to meet community needs. So I guess that's my counter to that.
Alderman Altman-Cloth?
I guess my counter to your counter is, and you had great points. You had really great points, and I don't disagree with you, but, and while I did not vote in favor of her, you know, Betsy has full confidence in Jenny Fidler taking over temporarily. So I think, you know, if Betsy feels that we're in good hands there, you know, we're in good hands there, you know, from an operation standpoint, you know, within the library. You know, my biggest concern is just her length of time in the community. You know, does, you know, do you really understand how our community functions? We're a lot different than New Berlin, you know, or Shorewood, you know, where you recently moved from. You know, we have two other applicants that, you know, are very ingrained in our, you know, our community. I mean, I think most people know how ingrained Lou is. You know, the other applicant is, you know, she has someone who has the kids in the district, you know, has been around for a long time, and, you know, I was very disappointed to find out she didn't even get a phone call from the mayor. You know, you live here for 18, 15 years, whatever it was. I think you at least deserve a phone call.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
I would like to hear the mayor's perspective on bringing this candidate forward.
No, there were five applicants, and we had five nice applicants. And what I tried to do is, if, the way it was presented, there were actually three positions. One was vacated, and still, two of them wanted to be reappointed. I made the decision to try to put a fresh look and a fresh spin to our, to our library. And I wanted, in Kate's position, somebody that had experience in the system for hiring a new director, and I felt that that brought a lot of value. And I looked at all three of the applicants. You've only talked to one. Of the three that you, of talking with Kate, she brings something different than the other two bring. And so I think that brings a ton of value. What I do after, if I, if I find people that I think are really good, that's what I try to bring to you. I also understand this process, because we have lost our director, and Betsy, thank you very much, but we've lost our director, this process of the interview is actually more robust than a lot of processes. We went through, I sat down and had our city administrator and our HR director do the interviews with me. So we really, we're very, very careful to try to match the people to have the diversity that we thought would be really good for them. to have the diversity that we thought would be really good for the Board. So I'm a very strong supporter of Kate. I understand your reasons possibly why not. Kate, none of this is personal. So please don't get mad or get disappointed or happy with regardless to the outcome. But I think it would be a real shame if we don't vote her, vote her forward. She has that library experience. We're in a library with a lot of people on the Board that have a lot of time here in the community. And she has a time in the industry. And to me, that brought a lot of value. And for the people that had applied and were not selected, they're getting, after confirmation, because I don't know, you know, what will happen here, they're going to get a letter from me and, you know, thanking them for continuing. Then what happens is all those applications Diane keeps. So when we, when whatever mayor decides next year, they get all those applications to look at, plus hopefully some new ones. So I wouldn't, I spent a ton of time on the library because I wanted to do it right the first time. And it's not the two applicants that didn't get, get the call to come up. It's not that they're bad or they're inferior, they're different. I felt this group would actually bring something new and fresh to their, to their Oconomowoc Library. So that was my approach. And it's up to you. It's your call. Yeah.
Yeah, no, thanks for that, Mayor. I will echo what you said. I think I might have said that before. Our questions for Kate are not personal. It's what we think is a council would be appropriate for that Board at this time. So I appreciate those comments, though, Mayor. And I'm ready to vote.
Any further comments before we go to vote? We have a motion in a second. Alderman Spiegelberg?
I'd just like to briefly say, I think that she would bring a great new perspective to our library and coming from a library, coming from a community that is twice our size and a library that is probably three times the size of our library.
Alderman Maroni, you get to speak your first time.
I was just going to say, I agree with that fresh perspective, what Karen said. I think this is an important issue for the city. I know there's a lot of perspectives on it. There's a lot of both ways on it, you know, people, you know, it's a hot topic item in the city, the library itself, where we go forward with that. So I just wanted to add that comment.
Great, thank you. Call roll, please.
Sorry, I have to get back to that. Alderman Rozak?
Nay.
Alderman Altman-Cloth?
Nay.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Aye.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Aye.
Alderman Maroni?
Aye.
Alderman Douglas?
Nay.
Vote carries four to three.
Welcome to the Library Board. And Kate, as you hear those, those challenges and those concerns, I think that's an opportunity to even prove that wrong. Not that they are wrong, but to do that. So welcome to the library and thank you all. And thank to all the volunteers that are here and several of them that haven't been brought up. We really appreciate you coming and we really appreciate you serving the City of Oconomowoc. So back to comments and suggestions from citizens. Item seven. Does anyone have any comments or suggestions from citizens in the audience? We have blue cards. You're welcome to come up and share any topic on anything with a council member today. We're seeing no blue cards or comments. We'll move on to our consent agenda items. I'd like to entertain a motion for the consent agenda items or a motion to pull anything out if you see so fit.
So moved to approve the consent agenda items.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Onto our next round, committee reports from Finance. So Consider Act on Grants and Donations Received and Budget Amendments. This is for the first quarter of 2023. That's January through March 31st of 2023.
That's correct. So in your packets tonight are the donations and grants that the city has received in the first quarter. Among them are just over $40,000 worth of donations for the K-9 Fund. We have our first donation for the fireworks. There's a $47,000 grant that, for Destination Marketing Grant, that was received. And then we did receive the cost sharing for the boat launch from the Town of Oconomowoc and for the fish grades from Lakhla Bell Lake Management.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Sullivan-Murray? Like to entertain a motion?
So moved, Altman-Cloth.
Second.
Any further comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Rozak?
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth?
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Aye.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Aye.
Alderman Maroni?
Aye.
Alderman Douglas?
Aye.
Onto our next item, Consider Act on Resolution 23-R3116, awarding the John and Lavinia Rockwell Park Phase 1 Construction Change Order and Budget Amendment. Mr. Hapner?
Good evening, thank you. Just a reminder, this is a budget amendment request. So we do need to have six positive votes to pass. That's usually what the mayor says. So I'll remind everybody. Just a quick update. So Yankee Contractors are the ones working on Rockwell Park. And they'll be back next week to finish Phase 1. As part of Phase 1, we'd like to take a few of the pieces from Phase 2 and put it and get it done in Phase 1. And two main items are the boathouse being renovated to be used as a kayak canoe launch and also completing the overlook area near the dam and some sidewalk work back towards the other kayak launch. To do this, we were, are asked, we had a $30,000 contingency. We're asking for an additional $44,900. That would get us to the max we can do for a change order for this contract. This funding would be coming from the DNR Stewardship Grant that we received. So money is from the grant towards this project. One item that was discussed in the committee was to do a little more work in connecting back out to North Main Street. We think that makes sense. And I think by leaving the current pathway or the driveway in and connecting that, I think we can make that happen. So tonight, we're asking for approval of this resolution, which is a change order and budget amendment of up to $74,900, with $44,900 coming from the DNR Stewardship Grant.
So I'd like to open a discussion for Mr. Hapner. We've talked about this at length at committee, but if there's anyone that would like to add some additional comments? Alderman Rozak?
I will just briefly. We talked about adding in the extra, cutting down the driveway and adding a little bit of path. Are we going to be able to do that within this budget amendment, you think?
Yes, I believe based on if we can leave the driveway in and do the little link. Yes, because I've left a little buffer zone yet in the budget to do something in case something else came up. So I'm pretty confident that can happen. I think it's an important piece because the goal is to have this ready for, by the 1st of July, which will be fireworks and parade day, and then get to use it all summer long. So we would have people be able to access then from North Main sidewalk up to the overlook as well as all the kayak launch areas.
Any further questions or comments from Alderman? I'd like to, Alderman Maroni?
Yeah, so we'll have this ready for the summer? Is that the plan? What's the exact date on that?
Well, there's never an exact date. We work with.
Generally.
With contractors and Mother Nature. They'll be back next week. It's probably through the month of May. But the main thing is they have to plant the seed and grow some grass, and it takes a little bit. So we'll stay closed probably through much of June, but open up hopefully late June, obviously in time for July 1st events.
Like to entertain a motion?
So moved, Rozak.
Second.
Any further discussions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Rozak?
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth?
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Aye.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Aye.
Alderman Maroni?
Aye.
Alderman Douglas?
Aye.
Onto our next item, which is Consider Act on Resolution 23-R3115, authorizing the application to participate in the Wisconsin DNR Stewardship Grant Program for this same park, the John and Lavinia Rockwell Park, for Phase 2 construction. Mr. Hapner?
Thank you. As you know, we were successful in a grant application for last year of $250,000. As we look at finishing the park, we think it's important to apply for another grant. This would also be from the DNR Stewardship Program. I have spoken with the representatives from the DNR regarding this, and I think it is definitely warranted to apply. In the grant application, we're going to refine what that number becomes. I put in our memo up to $400,000. It may be less than that. Again, this is a 50/50 matching grant. The matching funds would come from community donors. And there's no cost, obviously, to apply for the grant. This one, though, once we apply for this grant, puts us over the threshold of $250,000 total for the park. And so it goes through another process. Not only does the DNR Board approve it and staff, but it would go through the Joint Finance Committee through the state. So it takes a little bit longer. We would find out initially in September of this year if we're successful. And if so, then it has to go through that process. So it could be longer. It could be next spring. It could be, it just depends on how the process goes. But there's no, like I said, no cost to do it. I think it's an important piece to finish this park. And that's what we're looking for, for resolution approval tonight.
Questions or comments? Alderman Rozak?
Yeah, I'm all for applying for the grant. But if we, if it, because it's matching, it's 50/50 matching. So we have to match exactly what they give us.
Correct.
Right now, my understanding is in the Friends account, we have only $212,610. There's a total of $420, but $250 is from the previous Phase 1 grant.
Correct.
Can we use the grant money that we've received for Phase 1 to account for Phase 2 matching? Probably not.
Not in this case. If we had a separate grant, a different grant, we could, but not that one.
So I'm all in favor, obviously, of trying to get the money from whatever other government source we can that makes sense. But if we, if we get the $450,000 grant, we have to absolutely raise another $240,000 between now and.
We have to match it.
Correct. If we don't match it, what's the timeline on that? So let's say, let's say we increase this number from $212 to $390, and we're 60 grand short. We get the grant. Is there a period of time that we have to use the grant or match it?
Yes, they'll give you, usually a two-year period for it. So one of the benefits to it is we, let's say we max out at $390 as the donors, we can reduce the grant down to $390. So they're, they're very flexible. In fact, they're not going to give you the money unless they know there's a matching piece for it.
Yeah.
So.
So there's open communication. Where you say, hey, we don't need the $450. We've, we've maxed out it, we've tapped out of $350. We can't get another penny.
Correct. So I think it's worth going for the, the highest amount we think we need. But if that number comes down or we can't reach it on a match, we can reduce that, too.
Then the, the second part of that question would then be, if you, if you get the grant, you have to spend it. So let's say we're short of money. Let's say between the grants and the money we raised, we're still, I don't know, pick a number out of there, $450,000 short. We, and we can't spend it all on what we need to spend it. Do we just, again, reduce the amount we take and then spend what we can and be done with it?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
All right.
And I'd like to entertain a motion?
So moved. Rozak, second.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Rozak?
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth?
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Aye.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Aye.
Alderman Maroni?
Aye.
Alderman Douglas?
Aye.
Onto Consider Act on Resolution 23-R3117, awarding the Hickory Woods Park Baseball Court, basketball court, excuse me, contract. Mr. Hapner?
You can throw baseballs on the court, just not at the same time they're playing basket.
There you go.
So this is Hickory Woods Park, a newer park in the southwest part of town. In 2019, we put in a playground. In 2020, we put in some benches and trees. And our staff and myself have worked cooperatively with the neighbors, the residents and HOA to kind of plan out this park. So the two things we've put in the capital budget now are for this year is this project, the basketball court, and then next year an open-air shelter. So we put this out for bid. We received three bids. PLM is the low bid at $39,228 to construct this basketball court. We've obviously worked with PLM very recently at the Pickleball Complex. They've also done three of our four tennis court renovations. Very good to work with. So we would definitely recommend working with PLM on this project. All these funds for this project would come from park impact fees. Happy to answer any questions.
No questions? I'd like to entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further questions, comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Rozak?
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth?
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Aye.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Aye.
Alderman Maroni?
Aye.
Alderman Douglas?
Thank you very much. Next item is Consider Act on Resolution 23-R3125, awarding the Oconomowoc Parkway Sanitary Sewer Relay Professional Services Contract. Mr. Herzak?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Again, this is a follow-up from our conversation at our last meeting as it pertained to the sanitary improvement along Oconomowoc Parkway. It's roughly 3,700 feet of sanitary relay, where we'll be proposing to increase the pipe size in this corridor. And this item here is specifically directed towards the professional service and engineering services that it'll take to prepare the plans and specification. It was presented, so kind of adjust our standard procedure of asking other local engineering firms to give us a full proposal on preparing these documents and plans to kind of use a cooperative effort from city staff and local firms. So that's kind of what's presented here. As we had discussed before, this does consider a full proposal from Rooker Milky and our city engineer with also a side-by-side comparison with using local staff and Rooker Milky to make the same plans and specifications. The intent here is to try to utilize some of the expertise that we've recently hired on. And now we are trying to utilize some of that, those services here and certain opportunities, and this one presented itself. So if you've got any questions, I'm happy to answer.[1598.01] Looking for a recommendation here.
Alderman Rozak.
Yeah, just briefly, Jason, thanks for taking on a leadership role with this. When, when I interviewed you as part of the process of hiring the new DPW Director, and when Mark was leaving your position to go to Administrator, this was a big thing, something I've been pushing for years. I think will save money. And I think this is outstanding. So really good luck. I know as a design engineer, this is stuff you guys like to do.
Yeah, this is, this is good work for us. Not that anything wouldn't be, but this is very familiar piece of work, hopefully utilizing some of the people around here would really, you know, expose some of the strengths that we might have, or weaknesses.
Great. Well, good luck, and then report back to us when we're done to find out, you know, an estimate of how much we saved or didn't save, I think would be good. You know, hey, I did X amount of hours doing design work. That would have been 220 an hour at Rooker Milky or whatever, and it saved us X. You know, that'd be helpful for us to evaluate this moving forward.
I'd like to entertain a motion.
Motion to prove as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call, roll, please.
Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Clothe.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Maroney.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
And to Plan Commission items, Consider Act on the Final Subdivision Plot for Prairie Creek Ridge Edition Number Six, located on Wayland Drive immediately west of Prairie Creek Ridge Edition Number Five. Mr. Gallo.
Thank you. This is a final plat for Prairie Creek Ridge Edition Number Six. It does create 64 new lots in the city. This is very consistent with the preliminary plat. So this is more of a housekeeping matter. As Mayor said, it's, it's west of Prairie Creek Ridge Edition Number Five. It does connect on to the adjacent subdivision. And there's exhibits in your packet that show the, how the roads all connect and where the lots are. Plan Commission did recommend approval of this final plat before you.
We also have the applicant here, so if there are questions, we can bring the applicant up as well. Any questions from Council? Alderman Mulder.
Not really a question, just, you know, reiterating what we talked about last time is that there doesn't seem like there's going to be a lot of infill in these next stages. And so, you know, continually hear concerns from that neighborhood about truck traffic coming through there, about speed, about crosswalks. There's a lot of concern about safety there. So as these development moves forward, I'm just going to always bring up the fact that, you know, we're, we're relying on, on you to make sure that you're, you know, following through on all those promises. So thank you.
Any further comments, questions? Like to entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further comments? Call, roll, please.
Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Clothe.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Maroney.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Next item, Consider Act on the Final Subdivision Plot for Prairie Creek Ridge Edition Number Seven. The other one you talked about was Edition Number Six. This one is located at Green Tree Drive and Creekview Court. Mr. Gallo.
Right, this is another phase of Prairie Creek Ridge subdivision. This is Edition Number Seven. It does create 22 additional single-family lots in the subdivision. It does connect on, they did show exhibits of the overall development of how this, where it's located and how it connects to the adjacent roads. Plan Commission did recommend approval of this as well. It is consistent with the approved preliminary plat.
Alderman Mulder.
So in this one, it does call for the establishment of that, the beginning of the path to go underneath the Highway 16. If we fully spec that out, do we know that that's a possibility? Or is this just in preparation in case that's going to move forward?
Well, we've, I've walked the site, and I think other staff has, has walked the site. We've been in discussions with the DNR. There's some, some wetlands that would need to be crossed. And the idea of this would go from Nature Hill School all the way to Two Meadow View. It'd be school to school. There's a lot of residences in between. Kids could go on this pathway. They can get across the bypass going underneath the bridge, so they would not have to cross the bypass. Unfortunately, there's a lot of wetlands, so what we're doing is, as, as things happen, we try to put this in place, so we have a diagram showing where that trail would be. And, you know, the developer has graciously committed to installing an eight-foot-wide asphalt path with a fence delineating the area on, and easement on one of the lots. And we, we have that in your, your background that you showed. So the Plan Commission did talk about how important the connectivity was between the two subdivisions. And this is, even though it's not, it's a path to nowhere at this point, but it, it will connect, hopefully, someday to something.
I, you know, it's right, right in my backyard, and I, I think this is a great idea. I think it's, you know, we've already had one accident at that crosswalk on 16 and, and Z, and it, you know, just crossing that with my dog anytime. If you haven't tried to cross that, six lanes with a left turn lane in there, it's, even when you have the walk signal, you don't feel very safe. So there's going to be a lot of kids going back and forth between those schools. So this is, you know, this is a really nice addition, and I appreciate that effort.
Like to entertain a motion?
So moved. Spiegelberg.
Second, Mulder.
Any further discussions? Alderman Rozak?
I spaced out there for a second. It was, were you talking about crosswalk? Who are you talking about?
So this, this would eventually go, use the bridge across Rosenau Creek on 16 Bypass. And so the students could go use that path and not have to do the, use the crosswalk on 16 and Z anymore. So this would, this would prevent, you know...
And they're putting this in, the builder's putting this in.
Because they're not in the busing zone, they have to cross there.
And the builder's doing this?
Builder's doing it.
The building, the developer is putting it in on their property, but it does go off their property, and that's on someone else's land, that's not going in.
Gotcha.
But we're, we're starting it.
Kind of like Morgan Station. Started the, starting the process.
Okay.
Thank you, Jason, for the visual.
So if you've ever been out there, you know where, like, well, crossfields are, and then it kind of comes to that right before you enter the woods, that's where the bridge comes out, and where that path would then come out and go up the fence line to the school.
We have a motion in a second. Any further questions, comments? Call, roll, please.
Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Clothe.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Maroney.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Next item is Consider Act on the Conditional Use Permit for Laduka Duplex located at 213 South Cross Street. Mr. Gallo.
Earlier this evening, we held a public hearing. We had the applicant, as well as one of the adjacent property owners, come and speak. This is for a duplex. As I noted, it was a duplex back in the 1980s. There was a correspondence from 1993 in your packet saying, five years ago, they stopped using it as a duplex. I put that at 1988. But there was a history of, of this being used as a duplex for some time. As you know, there's 10 standards that have to be met. You've heard evidence by both, during the public hearing presentation, as well as the applicant speak, that those would be met. It's up to you to determine if those standards are, are being met fully. Plan Commission felt it was being met, and they did recommend approval of the conditional use permit.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Gallo? Alderman Rozak.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I keep going first. I, I've just, I've got all my notes everywhere, and I'm just, like, I don't know. It's one of those days.
Take off the tie.
Yeah, I know. So I, I'm happy with every, all the other conditions. The one thing that kind of triggered in my head was that impact fee. It, it's very large. The fact that they used to be a duplex in the 80s and now are, is a duplex again, kind of doesn't really matter as much as the fact that when we look at the park impact fees and all these other impact fees, to me, philosophically, that's for new people coming in that are using parks that all the taxpayers have built for 30, 40, 50 years, right? Here's a house that's been paying taxes for, I don't know when it was built, when was it built? So they've been paying taxes for over 100 years, 115 years, and we're going to charge them another tax on top of what we have been charging that property for all those years, because they're moving in maybe another, you know, obviously Kate Kennedy into the upper flat. So I, I just, I don't know if we can waive that, or what your opinion is. I'm, I am for waiving all the impact fees related to that unit. I don't think it is necessary. I don't think it's proper for a place like this. When we do impact fees for a Hackney House, or for whoever, that's because they're bringing in new apartments who are going to use all the facilities that we've paid for, for 30, 40 years. They're, they've already paid for it. I don't know why we should make them pay again.
This, this is a gray area because it was a duplex, and then they kind of lost that right. And now they're coming back in because our code says it needs it. I'll, I'll bet you in, in 1908, when this was built, or whatever year that was, I bet you they didn't pay an impact fee back then. So I, I don't know. It's a gray area. It is up to you. I'm trying to enforce an, an impact fee ordinance that we have on the books. It says all applicable impact fees are due, and it was a duplex.
So that's, so that's the key question, then, within this packet of stuff. That is not part of the 10 parts of the CUP. That's you trying to enforce the other impact fee.
Well, that, that is part of the...
I thought it was number six, but...
Shall pay two applicable impact fees. This is a CUP standard that you guys created.
Would they have paid two impact fees back in whenever they originally made a duplex?
No. So here's what happened. You and I went over this about three or four weeks ago. This was a duplex before we enacted these impact fees. And then it ceased being a duplex about 1982?
1988?
Something, yeah. Before we put these in place. Now it's being returned to a duplex after we put the law in effect. So can you waive it? I guess you can. Nobody's going to sue you to say, you know...
Make me pay more? Yeah, I mean, the only problem would be you set up a precedent for future, but I think what, what I'm saying, at least, as I sit here today, I see a place that used to be a duplex, that's been around for 115 years, that has paid property taxes for all those years. I don't need to stick him with another $5,000 bill. I, I just don't feel like that's proper.
Alderman Mulder.
I, it honestly, Matt, struck me as high as well, that as I, the, the impact fee is based on having new people coming to the city using those services, which, this is creating a new house, right? I mean, it, it is an existing building, but we're adding a family into, or a couple or whomever in. So it feels like the impact fees, whether it's a brand-new house out by you or by me, or, you know, adding a new resident here, it has the same effect on the community. We're adding people in, and that's what the, the impact is, the people. The impact isn't the house or the apartment. The impact's the people living in them, and this is the, kind of the associated fees to go along with that, to cover that. You know, the park's at 3,300, you know, that, that, that struck me as high, but that's what it is for, that's what we charge. So I guess I'm, I sit on both sides. It seems like a lot, but also it's fair. It's, we're adding a new house to the community, and that's what we charge new houses to join.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Well, would there ever be a duplex that, I mean, so the, the CUP's enacted, the, the ordinance requires us to have two different impact fees. That's what the CUP ordinance says for a duplex CUP, correct?
Says there's an impact fee due for each residential unit.
Right. And so that's the set, that's the set CUP across the board. That's not a unique condition you wrote into it for this CUP.
Right.
And so if we waive it on this one, I, maybe it's an informal precedent, but does it actually make our ordinance weaker, Stan? That it could be challenged or something, or...
Yeah, if you, why, how can you waive something that you have created a law that says that if you bring in one more unit, these folks have to pay the impact?
Okay, yeah. Kind of seems straightforward, then, if the law is...
There have been several other people inquiring about converting older homes into duplexes, so this is not like a one, one-time thing. This is going to probably come before you again in the future.
Right, because my guess and question is, if we're creating new duplexes, we're building new duplexes, would they still be having to get a CUP like this and be...
They would have to get two, they have to, they would then have to pay two impact fees.
But that's happening right now.
This is only ha, one new impact fee.
Well, Chaz, are you asking if you build like a brand-new duplex?
But hold on, hold on. What do you mean just one brand-new impact?
Because there's only one new unit being created. They're not paying two. They're paying one.
That would be double if it was for two.
Okay, so they are kind of getting a deal as it is then, right now. They're not paying the two.
It's a net increase.
Yeah.
Is it on by duplex like that, or does it go on square footage in multifamily?
No, it's multifamilies per unit.
Alderman Altman Clothe.
My initial thought when I saw this is it was high. And I get what you're saying about how, you know, it impacts, you know, bringing in more people. But does it really bring in more people? I mean, a house that size is a single-family house, I would think would attract, you know, a family of five to six, maybe even a larger family with the four bedrooms. And then taking it down to two, two bedrooms, I mean, technically, you could have less people living there.
True.
Very true.
Do we, do we really need, you know, for...
But i, i, in my estimation, if you want to deal with this issue, change the law, ordinance.
No, so can I finish, though? Can I finish? And I get what Stan's saying about, you know, this is what, this is how we have it written. So can we kind of maybe come to a compromise that this is how the CUP is written? We have to charge at least two, maybe pick the two smallest, like the highway and law enforcement? So at least then we stay within how the ordinance is written? Can we do that?
Well, I do have a response to that.
And before I go, we just have one other, so you have a question there. And so Council members, you have the ability to make those changes. What you're trying to do is decide, are you going to align with the law as written by previous councils? Alderman Spiegelberg.
And that's what I was going to say. We would have to change the ordinance. The ordinance is what it is. It does seem high. I thought that, too. If it were two brand-new units, it would be twice that much. Is this just making us more aware? Because we have not seen a duplex come before us, you know, in the recent past? Because I don't remember...
We, we have had at least two duplexes in the TR zone that, that have come before you for conditional use. One was on Concord Road, right by the bridge, and then the other one was on Grove Street on the, on the lake. And they, they did pay the full impact fees.
Okay. And so when was that, Jason? Like, how long ago?
Couple of years ago.
Okay. Did we see what the impact fees were at that time?
No, these go up every year, so I don't think I, I shared those.
Okay, because I don't remember seeing that. Those would have been probably twice that much then, correct? As a new duplex? As a newly developed duplex?
Well, again, those cases were very similar to this. It wasn't twice that because it was, they were taking a single structure and making it into a duplex, so net of one.
Alderman Rozak.
Yeah, all good points. I, I patently reject the prospect that we can't waive a condition of the CUP, or any of our ordinances in, in variety of circumstances. Otherwise, we couldn't have built Fowler Lake Village. We couldn't have built the new one, potentially Rockwell. We waive zoning requirements. We give amendments. We give changes to those things. So we can certainly do that. I think the question is, do we have, do we want to? I think we should in these type of situations, and I think we should use our discretion and be guided by that in these kind of situations. So, you know, next time someone comes in for a zoning request, or for a garage that's two feet closer to the side yard setback, we ought to not grant it, because the rule says you can't build it. So I'm going to vote against approval of this, because I think we should give them a break. Well, that's, that's kind of unfair. I'll probably vote for approving it, but I, with those comments, yeah.
It depends upon, there's, there's no motion on the table?
Yeah.
So this, we should continue the discussions so everybody's comfortable with what they do, they understand the ramifications of where we are today, how this impacts us in the future, and what those variables are. Alderman Spiegelberg.
I would just be really concerned about this setting a precedent, because then the next people that come in, they're going to say, well, why did you favor this person and not us?
But we can have that same argument, though, with...
For zoning or anything else?
For zoning and everything else.
Well, if I may...
It's so specific, though.
Yeah. And it's not specific.
The changes that you have, or the leniency that you have given in certain zoning instances are right in your code, under the PUD ordinance. This is totally different. It's got no, one does not have anything to do with the other. You have said, "Any new unit shall pay these fees." And I'm, you know, I'm not gonna argue with you about, you know, the interpretation of the law, but that's your law. That's what you have put on the books. Change the law if you want to give some leniency.
Mr. Laduka, I don't want you to take offense to any of this. It's a good discussion, and it's not personal at all.
I mean, if you look up impact fees on Google, it affects, I'll read it to you. "Impact fees is a financial tool available to Wisconsin cities, villages, and towns to pay for anticipated capital costs associated with new development." This is not new. So that's the key word, is new development.
I disagree with that. It is new, it's an additional home we're adding to our city. It's an existing building. By that, by that argument, we could, we could put 20 apartments in this building, and we couldn't, and we wouldn't call it new, because the building exists. I don't, it is a new development, that's why you're in front of us. It's because you want to change the use of an existing structure to something new. The fact that the house is 115 years old is irrelevant. It's, the use is new, and the impact fees are associated with anything new, whether it's a... So I don't, I don't think that's...
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Jason, can you go back to the last slide where it said? I forgot what it says. That one, yes. So number six, it says, "Shall pay two applicable impact fees." So going back to what I said before, can we take out the, I mean, can we at least kind of come to a compromise that we stay with these standards, we stay with whatever the ordinance says, and then we address the ordinance at a different time? But maybe take the, can we take the parks out? So he still has two, correct? So he would still comply with this?
You're misinterpreting it.
Oh, am I?
It's two impact fees, one for each of the houses, not one, not two of the five that are available. Am I, is that correct?
No, go back to the screen where it shows the dollar amounts. Because it shows, it shows fire, or not fire, it shows law enfor, it shows, okay, law enforcement, parks, and highway. So would two be highway and law enforcement?
No, the standard that it would be...
The two other dwellings.
When you're creating a brand-new duplex, they shall pay two applicable impact fees. And that's the, the impact fees are police, fire, and, you know, highway, and parks, and all combined into one, that's one impact fee. I just did a breakdown to show you what that fee's going towards. So in this case, they're getting a break because they're not paying two impact fees. They're only paying one. And then on top of that, as the second sentence of number six reads, "There's no increase in the sewer and water discharge in meter size." If they were increasing the meter size because of it, then they would have to pay the utility impact fees. And in that case, those are not applicable. And that'd be, that'd be about double then, from 4, $4,200 up to about $9,000.
I get it.
So they're really, they, I did give this a lot of thought, and I thought that is the most equitable way of charging them one impact fee for the new unit, and then on top of that, no sewer and water increase because they're not changing the meter.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
So I wanted to agree with Matt when he said "new." I think "new" doesn't mean new construction, number one, as you were reading it. And number two, if we waive this, I don't want to use the word willy-nilly, but if we waive this, and then someone else comes in at some point, and they're in a protected class, they're gonna say, "Why didn't you waive it for us?" And then they may try discrimination, and then they're suing the city because they're in a protected class of citizens.
Alderman Shellpepper.
I'm gonna be a strict constructionist here, I'm gonna go with the reading of the ordinance. I don't agree with the ordinance, I think we should change the ordinance. I think in the CUP analysis, isn't it just kind of like a quasi-judicial body? Isn't that how you always explain it in the CUP? You're analyzing the facts and how those comply with the CUP itself. And so I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
That the applicant has met the standards of the CUP, and I would like to make a motion to approve the CUP as presented.
Second.
Any further discussions or comments? Call roll.
Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Maroney.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
If there's an interest to change this moving forward, please see Mr. Frye, if you have an interest. Next up are two extraterritorial certified survey maps. Mr. Gallo, if you can go through items 10D and 10E.
To make sure I knew which is which here. 10D is to consider act on the extraterritorial certified survey map, dividing one lot into two lots located at North 56 West 36794 Lisbon Road, which is in the town of Oconomowoc. We had a certified survey map right across the street from the city of Oconomowoc property boundaries. They'd like to divide the lot into two lots. It's a sizable lot, and they would conform with all the city standards. There was one issue with this one along Lisbon Road. As other properties on Lisbon Road have been developing, such as Towner Crest or Pine Ridge Estate subdivision, we've been requiring a 50-foot dedication from center line of the road. Very typical, we have adopted the city's official map that shows future rightaways. So we asked them for a 50-foot dedication. That would not work for them because that would make the lots non-conforming on the town side. It's a bit complicated because they have a formula with a sliding scale saying they have to have so much land for an accessory building size. So they did not want to do that, but they've reached a compromise, and I've spoke to our legal team about it. And they said they will give us 30 feet right away because it was currently to the center line of the road, their property. And they'll give 30 feet right away, and they'll give another 20 feet with a note on there with a hatch pattern if this property would ever become annexed to the city. Then they would be in conformance with the city's requirements because we require much smaller lots, and it would no longer have to meet the town requirements. So staff went back and forth a few times, as well as our attorney, Stan Riffle, went back and forth with them. This seems to be the best solution in this case. It is in the town, but this is the whole reason that we review land divisions in the town. Someday, they may be in the city, and we want to make sure that we have enough right-of-way. Lisbon Road out there is not the best of roads. It's not built to city standards, it doesn't have sidewalk, and, you know, curb and gutter and all that. Someday, it might be widened out. So we're asking that the 50-foot would become dedicated, the additional 20 feet, once it becomes annexed to the city.
Questions or comments from council? Alderman Rozak.
Are we recording this Sheet 1 that they're agreeing to? Where are we going to record that as part of this?
Yeah, it'll be recorded on the certified survey map, so it will be recorded.
At the Register of Deeds. Were the folks that applied, did you explain to them that the right-of-way is completely meaningless during the time that they own it? I mean, you can mow it, you can do whatever you want. What's, why all the machinations over the extra 20 feet? I don't get it.
It would not conform to the town's standards, and the town would not approve it.
The city would like the additional 20 feet because of future growth and development, if it's annexed into the city. And the applicant is here too, if you'd like to have any questions.
I have no further questions.
Like to entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call roll.
Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Maroney.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Ms. Bass, thank you. Thank you for working with the city staff and coming to the Plan Commission. You did an exceptional job in trying to make it work. Great, thank you.
What about me?
Onto our next item.
End of story.
Consider act on the next extraterritorial certified survey map, combining two lots into one located at North 60 West 34628 and North 60 34638 Forest Bay Row again in the town of Oconomowoc. Mr. Gallo.
Easiest one of the night. Combining two lots into one, no problems in the town. It falls within our extraterritorial area, recommend approval.
Like to entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call roll.
Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Maroney.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Onto new business, consider act on Resolution 23-R3123, declaring the Old Highlander redevelopment project area a blighted area. Mr. Duffy.
Good evening, as we've had many conversations about this area over time, it's time to move some of these elements forward as directed by the council at your March meeting. So I want to walk through the blight determination report that was in your packet, as well as the steps in order to move forward both the blight report, a redevelopment plan, and ultimately this being added to TIF District Number 7 as an amendment, as discussed in previous conversations. First, I want to kind of give you a legal overview, and Mr. Riffle can correct me if I'm wrong, but just to remind everybody and educate everybody on the process we moved through and the definitions of blighted area. It is in statute that these are areas that are predominance of buildings or improvements that are, that show dilapidation, deterioration, or obsolescence, and are detrimental to the public welfare. The next one is somewhat key to the area we're talking about. The area which is predominantly open, which because of obsolete platting, diversity of ownership, deterioration of structures, improvements, substantially impairs or arrests the sound growth of the community. So I'll walk through some of those things when we go through the maps. Again, as a reminder, kind of the roles of the different bodies in this process. The CDA has a role in this, as you've created the CDA to utilize the blight clearance statute. So statute does require the CDA as authority to designate the boundaries of a proposed project area, of which the CDA did this evening, to prepare a redevelopment plan and conduct a public hearing and hold that public hearing on behalf related to that redevelopment plan. Your role as a common council, and you are the final decision-making authority, but that direction comes from you as it relates to how the CDA proceeds in this process. So this evening, what you're being asked to do is adopt the resolution by two-thirds of the council declaring the area blighted and in need of blighted elimination in accordance with the statute. And when we bring forward a plan, a resolution related to that project area, and a plan has been prepared, and then ultimately approve that plan. So let me walk through that area and some of those blight determinations. This is an aerial view of the area. We're talking about 88 acres of this area, and I'll have a more defined map. But essentially, this area in here, again, we have a lot of those conditions that exist. Just diversity of ownership here, as many of you know, this is in an estate, they've owned pieces of this over a long period of time, assumed ownership of this, other pieces more recently that they reacquired. So again, many different ownership entities here, all the way from TIF, Cheetah, and Howe, 53066 Cork, Magna LLC. So different ownership structures under the same umbrella. Ultimately, based on our conversations we've had with the council and some of the goals that you have as relates to ultimately creating this into a TIF project plan, would define this area as the area I looked at for a blight analysis. There's multiple parcels as it relates to that, and we'll talk about some of those very specifically. So required in the statute is to do a very specific analysis related to those parcels and the elements related to the blight statute and those conditions that exist. So I've inter-inventoried all of these. As I indicated before, there's 88 total acres here, 45.72. Exhibit blighting influences are 51.78% of the area. That is important because we need at least 50% of the area to be blighted in order to proceed with a redevelopment plan. So these areas obviously are lands within the area that are generally stagnated, vacant, and underutilized, and have been for many years. Some of them longer term, the golf course and ski hill specifically, for at least 10. Also with the statute, it talks about dilapidated buildings. We've had conversations about the recreational facility, obviously. That has been vacant for some time as well and meets the statutory requirement. We've had lots of conversations about the impediment this provides on that individual ski hill, and the ownership of the lease of that tower does not rest with the ultimate property owner who controls it, which creates a hindrance on that as well. Do need to specifically add that none of the parcels within the Briarwood subdivision exhibit blighted conditions. As we've talked about this, part of the goal of the city is we build this district and ultimately attach it to TIF Number 7 as an amendment, is the goal from a traffic flow standpoint, as directed by this council, to try to make this area, include this area in order for us to be able to get within a half a mile or improvements in the ability in the future of a half a mile to the Silver Lake Street-Oconomowoc Parkway intersection, should you choose to implement that as a public infrastructure project in the future. So again, this is the district boundary that was identified by the CDA this evening's meeting. Clerk Dan Conan has that signed resolution that was approved at this evening's meeting. So from the proposed redevelopment standpoint, you got kind of a look at the beginnings of that redevelopment plan that I've started to create. CDA also established a public hearing for that document to be brought forward and to have a public hearing, of which all property owners will be notified about. That public hearing will take place on June 6th. As we know, some of the conversations, some of the redevelopment vision is an apartment development as well as townhome development, to be able to bring additional growth and development adjacent to that Sendex Plaza, and then transition everything to the west to a greater development. Again, as we continue to build that redevelopment plan, our primary component relates to the infrastructure elements related to Papst Road, related to the Oconomowoc Parkway, related to some sewer work in Oconomowoc Parkway. So as indicated this evening, the CDA moved that forward as it related in designating boundaries. Looking now for your approval of the resolution, recognizing they've identified the area, recognizing that it's a blighted area, and directing the CDA to prepare a redevelopment plan.
Like to open, any questions for Mr. Duffy? Alderman Maroney.
Yeah, with the potential for moving to Silver Lake Street with the Parkway, with the blighted area, what's the timetable on that?
Yet to be determined. Most of the conversations that it had, and from the elected official standpoint, and correct me if I'm wrong, one of the understandings is this is seen as the best way, in the best interest of the community as a whole, to build that improvement at some point in the future, should they look to do that. So no timetable has been set in that. When we bring forward both a redevelopment plan, it already references, if you looked at it, that there's a desire for intergovernmental cooperation. And then there's another element that'll get developed, provided into a ultimate TIF project plan, which, under the TIF project plan process, we're identifying dollars for potential projects. However, the body, the council body at the time can decide when to or not to invest those dollars. So that's a decision to be made in the future related to the need for that improvement, based on the discussions we've had.
Alderman Douglas.
...
So you said we need 50%, correct?
Correct.
And we're at 51.7%. Can you run me through how we get that extra 1.7% to make sure that we're good there? How does that formula equate to 51.7%?
Well, if you look back at that...
One that was really small, that's hard to read.
Yeah, I mean, basically what I'm doing is I'm taking the acreage of each parcel, totaling them, and then dividing it based on those that meet the blight criteria to get that 51.78%.
Another question if I can? So one of the things for blight you talked about was utilization of property, not, you know, not the best utilization. Are we considering just vacant land, not best utilization? I guess that could be different than other people.
One of the elements is not just vacant land, but it impedes orderly growth. Recognize we have a piece of real estate here that although it's vacant, is a failed business enterprise or a golf course, and its highest and best use likely might be something other than a golf course that is likely not feasible to go back into business.
We could say the same thing about just straight farmland.
If it impedes orderly growth.
Well, I mean, I think there is a difference between farmland and a former golf course in an area that is redeveloping that is just sitting there vacant. I think that there's a difference with a distinction. I mean, if they were planting corn on it, I would have a little bit more of a concern related to meeting the criteria under 661303. But I have no doubt that we meet the criteria of blight. None. I'm not concerned at all.
Other comments or questions? And remember, this needs to be a two-thirds vote to pass. Alderman Rozak.
So the only reason this blight really makes it is because we're attaching it to the other district, right? That was, we've already blighted the rest of Olympia Fields, correct?
Well, one of the reasons we're blading is in order to attach it to TIF Number 7.
Did we, did we put the folks over on Briarwood on notice about this meeting tonight? Do they get a notice on this meeting?
Not at this point, because we haven't designated it as anything yet. We will do that once we build the redevelopment plan and we do the public hearings.
So this is just creating the outline?
And directing the CDA to do a redevelopment plan, which is required.
Which is where we actually declare the blight.
I'd like to entertain a motion.
Second. No, nobody made a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
Any further discussion or comment? Call roll, please.
Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Maroney.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Onto our next item, consider act on the changes to the 2023 June and July Common Council meeting dates. Mr. Frye.
Thank you, Mayor. I had reached out to the Alderman a little while ago.
I had reached out to the Alderman a little while ago indicating that first meeting in July would end up on July fourth. There was a consensus of the group that, you know, obviously not to have a meeting on that date. We were wondering if it was possible to meet later on in that date and there wasn't a consensus amongst the people that had responded. So then, working with Bob Duffy, we have a couple other things. So we were looking at schedule and timing and we felt that the best way to handle the meetings would be to start back in June with the first meeting of the month on, on June sixth, that we would leave that meeting as is. The second meeting of that month would normally fall on June twentieth. Our recommendation is to not have a meeting on the twentieth, but to move that meeting to June twenty-seventh. Then we would not have a meeting on July fourth and our next meeting would then be on July eighteenth.
So I'd like to open up discussions or questions with Mr. Fry.
Sounds like a good plan.
Like to entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Maroney.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Next up are some more mayoral appointments or reappointments, twelve B through E. I'll read them for you as the mayor, for the emergency government director is Chief Bowen. Appointments for Pabst and Stormwater Sewer District are Jason Herzog and Mark Fry. Mayoral appointments for city attorney and assistant attorney are Stan Riffel and Jeff Eck. And then mayoral appointments to the WPPI board are Joe Pickard and Mark Fry. The last one, number E, there does not need to be confirmation. We want to make sure the public is aware of those. We're welcome to answer, ask anyone in the audience any questions if you like, or you could bundle these twelve A, B, twelve B, C, D and as one motion, or we can take them one at a time. It's up to you, council.
I'll make a motion to approve B, C and D. Twelve B, C and D.
Second. Any further discussions, comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Maroney.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Great, and there's no need for a vote for the WPPI, but you know who our representatives are. We'll move on now to the election of the council president. Going into this, I would just like to make a comment to council that over the last two years, our council president, vice president, I've really enjoyed working with. I have no idea who you're going to vote for, but it's been really a joy. They provide a lot of advice to me and they also call me out when maybe I need to be called out. So whoever you elect, those are the things I would like. So as you vote, look for somebody that's going to be engaged and that's going to kind of be that oversight of the mayor because that's what I believe it should be. So Diane.
What we will need right now would be someone to make nomination of who they would want to be council president in a motion and then we need a second. And then if anyone else after that nomination is made wants to make a different nomination, you would do so at that time because then we would be voting on it by ballot and at your stations, there are ballots. There are three different types, they're labeled. One is for council president, one is for council vice president, and one is for council representative to the plan commission, and those are all voted by ballot, but we take one at a time. We're going with council president first. So I would entertain any motions for a nomination.
I'll move to nominate Matt Rozak as council president.
I'll second it.
Are there any other nominations? No other nominations? Okay, well, we can vote on that right away because we only have one, so we don't have to do the ballot. So I will take roll call. Alderman Rozak.
I guess I have to vote for myself.
Well, you don't have to.
There's no one else to vote for.
Alderman Altman Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Maroney.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
I thought that would be our one nay.
Unanimous, Alderman Rozak is council president. So now I will take nominations, motion for a council vice president.
I'd like to nominate Matt Mulder.
Are there any other nominations for council vice president? Alderman Douglas.
Nominate Alderman Altman Cloth? I'll second that.
Matt Rozak is second. Are there any other nominations? No other nominations? Okay, so you have, like I said, ballots in front of you. The first ballot in your little pack is for the president. The second ballot is for vice president, so please use the vice president one. Please write the Alderman that you are voting for their name and also indicate your name. You can use your initials, I'll know who you are, but on that ballot. Because it's not a secret ballot. No, and then.
Yeah, it is.
Is it a secret ballot?
Yes.
It's a secret ballot.
Secret, yeah. We don't have, in fact, the roll call for president probably didn't need to be done. That could have been done by acclamation, but that's okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm mistaken. So just fold them and please pass them down and then I will read them. And we'll see what the votes have. I have four. Thank you. You have three.
No, you cannot. Don't spill your water.
It's not like Congress where you got to stand up over and over again.
I'm reading them in no particular order because I don't know who they're from. I have a vote for Altman Cloth. I have a vote for Alderman Mulder. I have a vote for Mulder. I have a vote for Altman Cloth. I have a vote for Mulder. I have a vote for Altman Cloth. And I have a vote for Mulder. Four votes for Mulder, three for Altman Cloth. So Alderman Mulder, you are our council vice president. The last election is for council to determine the plan commission representative, and so I am looking for nominations for plan commission representative. Karen?
I'd like to nominate Kevin Ellis.
Second, Rozak.
Are there any other nominations?
Ask for a motion to approve by acclamation.
Okay, I will do that. Are there any other nominations? I would like a motion to approve by acclamation since he is the only one nominated. Second?
Sure, second.
Okay, Karen. All right.
Favor, aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much. You have your representative to the plan commission is Alderman Ellis. That concludes that.
Thank you, and thank you all for your extra time put in on those positions. Now we're going to move on to item sixteen, which is are the appointments of our council members to different committees, boards. And so I have a little presentation here for you and then a handout for you as well. This way it gets onto the record for the public. So there are a lot of things that I look for in the different committees and I'd like to move people around when I can, but there are also certain people that are on, doing certain projects that it's good to have them stay in the same position. So yeah, I try to meet the needs of all of you the best that I can, and here we go. Thank you again, guys, for all because I think the community doesn't realize that it's not just coming to council meetings, that there are also a lot of committees and meetings you have to go to. Park Rec Board and Forestry, Kevin Ellis, Andy Maroney. Personnel Committee, Matt Mulder, chairperson, Chris Douglas, secretary, Charles Shellpepper, member. Finance Committee, Charles Shellpepper, chairperson, Karen Spiegelberg, secretary, Andy Maroney, member. Protection Welfare, Chris Douglas, chairperson, Charles Shellpepper, secretary, Matt Rozak, Tourism Commission, Matt Rozak. Public Works, Matt Mulder, chairperson, Jennifer Altman Cloth, secretary, Kevin Ellis, member. Police Commission, Jennifer Altman Cloth. Utility Committee, Matt Rozak, chairperson, Kevin Ellis, secretary, Matt Mulder, member. And Library Board, Jennifer Altman Cloth. CDA, Community Development Authority, myself and Karen Spiegelberg. Elderly Housing Authority, Chris Douglas is a member. So this is just a summary for you, and then we'll pass these along to council members, which has this graph here, so you have it as reference, as well as some dates and things to look at, budget meeting dates, as well as some things going on in the community. So with that in mind, I need to go over to see if we have any staff reports?
Just one real quick, sir. I know everybody's very interested in the pedestrian underpass and we've been talking about it for a while. Washaw County is, is the lead on that project. It's a, it falls under the DOT work, but they sent out, we're going to be doing a pre-construction meeting tomorrow on that project and they anticipate starting construction on May first.
When? I didn't hear that.
First.
Thank you, Mayor.
Will Kevin be here with the shovel?
We're, we're working on that. We're trying to save some money.
Guys can't make fun of him when he's not here, that's no fun.
No, I could do it to his face.
Onto reports and comments from the Alderman. Anything you'd like to share with the community or with each other? Alderman Mulder.
I would just like to thank Director Black for her service to the community. I met her one of the first days she joined us as a children's librarian. I think she did a great job transitioning us from our director of thirty years to whatever director comes next and best of luck in Brookfield.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Ditto to that, and I won't repeat myself on that. So thank you very much, Betsy. I wanted to congratulate Alderman Rozak and Alderman Mulder on president and VP. I know you guys continue to do a great job for us. And then I just, as we're going into redoing Oakwood Avenue, if anybody from our district is listening or just be patient with us. I live closest to there and I know I'm going to be getting a lot of complaints about what's going on with there, but in the end, it's going to be a fabulous project and it's going to look absolutely beautiful. But we're just in the throes of starting that now from the Fowler Bridge all the way down to Lisbon, and that's going to go on until what, end of June? Yeah, yeah. Thank you so much for everything they've done so far, but I know we're gonna, we're going to get some ears full, but I know it's going to be great in the end, it'll be worth it, so.
Any other comments from Alderman? Alderman Rozak?
Yeah, I do have a couple. These are just some pending projects. One of the things that actually you, Matt and I talked about a couple months ago was after the new council was on board, getting together and creating some priority lists again, probably not like we did last time with the strategic planning, but what we talked about is brainstorming and I think that's a good idea. I'd like to get that scheduled as soon as possible. Partly it was to, you know, hopefully kind of, I don't know, quarter off some of the debate during budget cycle and us getting priorities out there to everyone, so everyone kind of knows what we all have. Someone's got a priority for X, someone's got a priority for Y and doing that. So that was one of my, my comments. A couple of the quick ones, I've had a lot of complaints in the Pabst Farms Village Lane area. There, the, the police actually put up speed signs a while back and did some extra enforcement, but we need to work with the county on doing something along Valley Road there as well and Village Lane connection. It goes from forty-five to thirty-five and then you're at the Y and you're at, we, we need to put pressure on. I plan to keep calling my supervisors and Paul Farrow and seeing what we can do, but I, I would like our city staff to actually start working with them on reducing the speed limit there because it's fast. So it drops from forty-five to thirty-five and then you're at the Y. And then you're at the school and then you're at Hackney House. So we, we just have to do something there. All of Village Lane, for anyone that doesn't drive there, hit their Starbucks in the morning. Village Lane has got no lines in it and it is a Speedway. It's very wide and I've been getting complaints for a while about this. They've, we've got to line it and put in turn lanes, that's what it's designed to do. We have to do that and then create some type of signal or stop sign between the Fleet Farm second entrance and the Hilton Garden Inn. If you take a left turn there, it is treacherous. And I've almost been hit, my wife's almost been hit with kids in the car. It's like crossing an eight-lane highway there because that stop sign's so far back and then you're crossing that entire way to go left. So we, we absolutely have to do it before something tragic there happens. And you know, it's slow enough, it probably won't be a death, but it could be injuries.
You got that, Mr. Herzog?
Yeah, he's, he's, I think he got, he might have gotten an email on that about, from me already. The other thing I sent in the email was working on the road abandonment on LaBelle Springs Lane in my subdivision, and I talked to Mark about the potential of bringing some type of, we don't want anything special out there, but there's, there's the road to nowhere, abandon the road and put in some type of just grassy area. Our subdivision would be willing to maintain that grassy area and mow it along with all of our other area. It's just an ugly eyesore. It's, you know, work trucks used to park there and it's, it's just, it's terrible. The last thing I'll mention is something that the folks brought up last time we were all here, which was the old Enterprise Building and the abandoned houses. I've seen no action whatsoever on that. We have moved and based on my suggestions and other things I've put forward through the police department, when people have junk cars in their driveway, when they have junk piled up in their backyards, we can issue them a nuisance ticket. We can ask them to start cleaning up their facility. We can ask them to board it up properly, clean it up, get rid of noxious weeds. We have all these things in our ordinance. For the life of me, I don't know why we're not enforcing it. And I, I would ask our police, this, you know, you guys, this is not on you, but we need direction from city staff, from this council and from the police to move forward and start ticketing that building if it's got rats, if it's being broken into, if it's becoming a nuisance. If, if it's fines, we need to find them. What, what has occurred on that corner is completely unacceptable, absolutely unacceptable for a city like this, and we need to do something. So I'm going to call on the council to do something. I'm going to call on our city staff to do something on it. I think we should keep talking about it. And maybe if nothing else, you know, the folks that own that building will be embarrassed that they're leaving it looking like that and that these folks are looking at people breaking in and rats and people living in there. So that's all I have. Sorry, that was long, unusually long.
No, that's good. Alderman Maroney.
Yeah, I just want to say that it's an honor and a privilege to serve the second district of Oconomowoc and I look forward to working with everyone. And this is my hometown, I grew up here and ready to give back, so.
Great. Welcome. Alderman Shellpepper.
Yeah, welcome to Alderman Maroney, taking the seat. Looking forward to serving the district with you and happy you're here. And also just, you know, my thoughts, my prayers are with our police officer whose family was just devastated and Lieutenant Tring, you know, whatever condolences we can, you know, send. I mean, we just, you know, we're, we're all absolutely devastated by what happened and we're, we're all in support with you and, you know, hopefully people have sought out the GoFundMe page and you've been able to make donations, so we're, we're all thinking about the officer and his family and our police department in general.
Any further comments or reports from Alderman? With none, we're going to move on to comments from the mayor. I'm going to start off with a couple proclamations. First of all, we'll start with, whereas in nineteen, excuse me, eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas, trees can reduce the erosion of topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas, trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. And trees are the source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas, Oconom- And whereas Oconomowoc has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for thirty years and deserves to continue its tree planting ways. Now therefore, I, Robert P. Magnus, mayor of the city of Oconomowoc, do hereby proclaim April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three as Arbor Day in the city of Oconomowoc, and I urge all citizens to support the effort to plant and care for our trees and woodlands, and to support our city's community forestry program. Thank you. Our next proclamation, whereas treatment and care of persons with intellectual disabilities has been a special project for assistance by the Wisconsin State Council Knights of Columbus, and whereas since nineteen seventy-four, the state and local councils of the Knights of Columbus have conducted an annual fundraiser in the communities of Wisconsin, with proceeds of the endeavor donated for not-for-profit agencies serving persons with intellectual disabilities. And whereas the Knights of Columbus, number eight-two-four-eight-seven of the city of Oconomowoc, will be joining other Knights of Columbus councils in the state by conducting a local fund drive for this worthwhile cause. Now therefore, I, Robert P. Magnus, mayor of the city of Oconomowoc, do hereby proclaim May fifth through May seventh of this year, two thousand twenty-three, to be Knights of Columbus to aid persons with intellectual disabilities, and urge all citizens to take cognizance of the special events arranged, arranged for this time. Thank you. The last thing I have for you is just a few comments about things moving forward. And I've only got about thirty or forty slides here, so we'll, we'll get done quickly. So first of all, everyone, when you, when you run for election, when you do things, when you become a mayor, we all have different agendas. We have different priorities. And I want to share some of what drives me to help you better understand me, and also as we move forward, that I can better understand you. So I really look at two core priorities. I want to make sure if I call the police department, they're there right away. If I need an ambulance, they're there very quickly, and if my house is burning, I want to be able to have people there to save me, save my family, save my animals. So public safety is a really important part of our community. The next aspect that I think is really important is financial stability. And it's easy to say I'm fiscally conservative, or I want to be financially responsible. But if you just take these two attributes, then you build those as a foundation of the city, which I think we've done well as a city. A lot of really, really good things can happen. So that's really the things that try to drive me in trying to help direct the city moving forward. And as we go into this next year, we really need to work on our policy. We're going to be starting May second. It's in your little packet that I gave you, to have a little workshop on trying to decide what are our priorities moving forward. We offer services. We're a service industry, and those services vary. They become more expensive. They become unpopular. There are new services. So there's a lot of variability in services, but it also makes us really the community that we are. Our revenue is fairly fixed, and we've gone through that in multiple phases. And when you sit back and just look at the simplicity of this, as we start going through, especially the budgetary stuff over the next several months, I think we can do some good things together. Finance Department, I've put in your little packet that I gave you. I'd like to have you meet quarterly and really put more effort towards oversight of our city financial status. Working with Lori, I think you guys will do a great job. Public Works, we have a lot of challenges with our roads. We have a lot of funding challenges with our roads. We really have to think about what is the next three to five years down the road? Utilities, we've said it here in the past, wouldn't it be wonderful if we could even be more energy independent? What are some of the things that we can do? So we're going to push forward to try to do more of those things moving forward. There are so many things. I can go through every item for you, and I know it's been a long night. But the message I'm, I'm trying to relay to all of you, whether you're the chairman of the committee, whether you're a member, it doesn't really matter. Try to decide what are some of the things that you really want to drive forward to try to do some cool things here in our city. As you heard earlier in the committee, we have Jason Geller, who's really working hard on looking at the structure of our growth. It's great to grow. We want to grow. We are market-driven, but also are we growing the right way? And so we're doing a lot of analysis now to try to give you more information to make really good judgments moving forward. Park Rec and Forestry, there are so many projects out there. Craig, thank you for all your efforts, because it's really going. We're trying to do as much as we can with little tax levy money used at any point in time. But there are a lot of these projects that we want to try to accomplish and get completed. But as you look at all these depart, at these departments and all the things that happen, as committee members really dig into the safety aspect, the financial aspect, and things that are important to you that you hear from your constituents. Because we have services and we have a fixed budget, and we've got to figure out how to make that work every year. And you are going to see this year, and Alderman Rozak alluded to it, that we're going to have a few meetings to really try to bring up to the surface some of those priorities that we all have, which will make this process, I think, a lot easier and maybe more effective. Maybe we can do more, and if we're really lucky, we can do more with less. Your vision, your ideas, May second, we're going to have a committee of the whole meeting. There's a memo in the packet that I handed out to you from, from Mark. Come to that, come to that meeting. Think about the things that are important to you to get this process started. But most of all, thank you for everything that you've done recently and stuff that's going to happen moving forward. I, I, I think two thousand twenty-three is going to be a spectacular year. We have an incredible staff. We've got a great council, and really the sky's the limit. So that was my one sales pitch to what I'd love to see have things go forward that you'll hear from me. But I would love to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Have a wonderful night, everyone.